All right, we'll call the meeting to order. And Mr. George, would you lead us into the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We need to approve the agenda. We've got one person that would like to do public comment, and we would have to amend the agenda to allow that. So we would need a motion and a second and a two-thirds vote, I believe. Is that correct, Brandon?
Yes, sir.
Otherwise, we will just need a motion. We'll have to do that, and then we would have to approve the agenda.
That's right.
If anyone wants to make that change. Okay, no motion to amend the agenda. Is that what I'm hearing?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to a public comment.
Okay. Mr. George has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith has made a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, unanimous. So now do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All right, Mr. Smith has made a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Ms. Fontana has made a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, unanimous. Thank you. All right, review of the pre-K and elementary school COVID-19 attendance options.
Mr. Chair.
You have to do public comment.
Public comment.
Mr. Chair. Oh, yes, public comment after we just did it.
Yes, sir.
Shame on me. All right, we have one for public comment. Shannon, come on up.
Do I keep my mask on?
Yep.
No, ma'am.
Uh...
Okay, well, I was not prepared to do this, but...
Let me stop you a minute before we start. Public comments are three minutes.
Okay.
And...
Perfect.
I don't...Brandon, do you have the statement? He's gonna...he's gotta read this before we start.
Hold on one second.
I don't have it here.
The Pender County Board of Education welcomes comments from parents, students, and the community. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the educational program, or school facilities. Each person is granted three minutes for his or her presentation. This portion of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest from the public. However, obscene, vulgar, or profane statements, and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting will not be prohibited. That's the statement, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. If you understand that, then go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely.
Three minutes off. Brandon, will you keep up the...do you have a timer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Okay, well, I am a mother to two children, a boy in elementary school and a girl in middle school. They have suffered greatly since March. I understand that we, you know, have to do things safely and from a health standpoint, but as a mother speaking from a mental health standpoint, this has been so detrimental on my children, as well as many other families. I just honestly feel like the risk really...you just can't balance it. These kids need to be in school. They need to socialize. Within reason, I'm for masks, I'm for protecting everyone, I'm for temperature checks, I'm for protecting our teachers, but this is destroying our children. It's absolutely destroying them, and they do not deserve this, and this is not what we signed up for. And I know that we are dealing with a pandemic, and this is our...you know, we're all trying to do the best that we can, but I just urge you guys to really think about these kids because they are our future, and this is what it should be about. It should be about them, and they deserve so much better than what they're getting right now. And I know I'm the only parent here, but I just felt like I needed to be here in person today to stand up for what I think is right because I just think this is so wrong. It is destroying families in our county, not just mine, but all over. And I just can't help to think about the kids that the only place they eat is at school, the only mentor they will ever have is at school. My children are very lucky, they're very blessed, but even for them in my household, this is awful for them. And I know that we can do this safely. I know that if we come together, we can get these kids back in school safely. I really believe that. If I thought that we couldn't, I wouldn't be here today. But I just feel like the risk of having all these kids home like this outweighs any risk of them being back in that classroom. And that's really all I've got to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now item one. Dr. Hill, do you want to start, or anybody?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have updated our numbers and from the request of the board, did a survey based on the question presented, and we have those numbers for you today that we would like to present for the call meeting. The first numbers will come from the Health Department. We believe they're on the line, Ms. Shirley Steele. Are you there, Ms. Steele?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, do you mind going ahead and doing your part of the presentation, please, with the updated numbers?
Okay, I definitely can do that. I didn't put together any county numbers today. I just went strictly with the CDC indicators and thresholds. There again, as I had mentioned when I was there last week, that this is...it shouldn't be the only thing that we look at to make a decision about where our children need to be or as far as opening up the school for K through five, but I did break out the inmates since Mr. George had really made a...had some valid points there because they're not in the community. So with that said, when I break out the community numbers, I mean, I'm sorry, break out the inmate numbers out of number one on those core indicators, that brings us back down to the higher-risk category instead of the highest risk. I did put in, if we had left the inmate numbers in there, that we would be in the highest risk. The percentage of positive tests has decreased. It came down to 6.8 from 10%, and that does change, I mean, literally, it changes almost daily. Number three hasn't changed. Number four came down somewhat. Our percentage of cases, the difference between the last 14 days from week...the week...first week to the second week, did decrease by 2.5%. I did the percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the community. I strictly went with our region, which is made up of several hospitals. I did not look at the state because I felt like we were more concerned about what was going on in our region. And 86% of our hospitals report in our region, and it's made up of several counties. I think it's seven counties. As you can see, our numbers came down quite a bit to the...on the percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the community, to the percentage of intensive care units beds in the community that are occupied, and then the percentage of hospital inpatient beds in the community that are occupied by patients with COVID-19. That's really all of the information I had planned to share unless you guys have some questions. In our region, I will say one more thing. In our region, we currently have 49 hospitalized with COVID, and that's, I think, at least a seven-county region.
Is Ms. Collins...is Kim also on the line? Kim Collins? Oh, I didn't see you, sorry. You were hiding. So I have a question about the numbers of the quarantine, the quarantine numbers we have. Ms. Steele, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask Ms. Collins first. So what does that number consist of? I mean, is that...is that contact to contact? Is that also including those who may have had symptoms, but then we clear those numbers out? When they're cleared by their doctor, and they show that they're not...that's maybe due to allergies or something out? Because that's going around a lot right now.
You're speaking of...you ask about the exposures.
Well, and I'm asking about our number of quarantines that we have listed at this time.
Okay. People that are quarantined have had an exposure, a contact to a case, or a house...or a household member, for example. If we have a student that has been a contact to a case, and they have a parent that's a teacher, for example, both of them will be quarantined. Also, just as an extra layer, we have found that for those kids that have been quarantined, we have seen very few exposures in the schools because of the way that we have done the quarantine. Does that make sense? The way we have quarantined people has kept us from having so many cases in school. The one thing that we have done that has been as an extra layer versus from what the state is requiring us to do, because we're a school system, a parent, for instance, of a child who has been quarantined, that parent is also going to be quarantined. Now, if they're a kind...if they're a symptom, if they have a symptom and have not been exposed to somebody with a...with a positive test, that's different. Those folks are quarantined until one of three things, until they have a negative test result, until they have an alternative diagnosis from a doctor that says this is not COVID-related, they can return to school, or they stay home for 10 days. And that is...that's the state requirement.
Okay, and that's in with our quarantine numbers?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, the school nurses are following up with all those symptoms. In other words, if we have a...if we have a teacher, for instance, or a student in a school that has a symptom, Health Department is not following up with that necessarily unless that symptom becomes a positive case, as long as they're not...as long as they have not been exposed to a positive case. And should...should that happen, then the Health Department will get involved once that diagnosis is made. Shirley, do you have anything else to add?
No, I was just gonna clarify, and Kim, I'm not sure how clear this was, that we...that quarantine number also, and I think Kim touched on this, makes up...it's people in the household. We're kind of sort of quarantining contacts to contacts just from school, and we're looking at trying to do something different with that moving forward because...just because someone in your house has been exposed to someone who's positive doesn't mean...we've been trying to...we've been keeping everybody else out of school trying to...so that we can keep...keep control of the cases in the school, but technically, we cannot quarantine contacts to contacts. We are looking at trying to do something moving forward a little differently with that.
Okay, that makes sense. All right.
Is that it?
I think so. I think that's for me. Anybody else?
No, I was just looking at our...I was looking at our dashboard numbers today. I'm assuming it's back up now?
Not yet.
No. Well, when it went down, it was...we had 72 quarantined and only one exposure. That kind of looks like a huge imbalance. Yesterday, it was 60 quarantined and one exposure. I mean, yeah, 60...
One diagnosis, do you mean?
60...60 quarantined and one isolated, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
It's 72...today, it was 72. Before it went down, it was 72 quarantined and one isolated. Is that correct? Is that...
Well, what happens is that is alive, you know, typically, when it's up and working, it's alive, so it re...you know, re...is reviewed every five minutes, so it changes. So if we have someone, for instance, that we find out about today that was tested last week, for instance, in our high schools, for instance, because they're out two weeks at the time, that has been diagnosed, that person may...their isolation date may have started way back a week ago, so they're...they're gonna roll off pretty quickly. Now, if they've exposed somebody, then they're not gonna roll off as quickly. And what is happening with our families, that we're finding out that's kind of being passed through the families, that first person starts their isolation for 10 days. So everybody in the house kind of has that 10-day window, and then if somebody else becomes positive, it kind of has to start all over. So we may have, you know, and we have seen this. We've seen...had a couple of families that have been out for a good while because somebody keeps becoming positive in their household, and so they're all continuing to have to quarantine or isolate. That makes sense? Okay.
There's quite another question.
Anything else? Anybody? Okay.
Anybody else, staff? Anybody got anything else they want to say before we take any action?
We got a couple more slides.
Okay.
So, Lord, we've updated this slide. We just...these are basically the slides we had last week. We've updated 14 last week, three of those virtual when requested for that information. We had six the week...this past week between the last week and now, and we've had four Monday and Tuesday of this week. So that's the latest numbers internally in the school system. And of course, you've talked about that. The next slide is basically our dashboard, and again, it's...this is due to the company that we work with. They're actually having issues with anybody who uses Google in the country right now. So they're working with our tech department to get this updated. This was actually just a snapshot taken of it at latest numbers, I think, yesterday. Is that correct? And then the next one is the requested...you guys have had this for a couple of days now or all weekend, and this is the cert...or excuse me, the intent results, intent reform that you requested that we send out. So these are the numbers for that. Basically, overall, 63% in the blue in the bottom left is no, and 37% is yes to do you intend to return in person on November 2nd. That's just the same slide we...that's the options we listed last week. That's the final slide, Chairman Hall.
Let everybody think about it. So does anybody want to make any motions, or discuss it, or talk, or anything?
So the... The return to virtual spread out over the county didn't look that staggering as I thought it was gonna look. I mean, some grade levels only had one returning. Is that...did y'all get that same indication?
Absolutely.
I think Burgow Elementary was maybe the highest in the county.
Mary from Grand Rapids, those numbers there on the overall...
Yes, sir, Mr. George, overall, I would say that's correct. There were some variations from grade to grade or school to school, but the numbers that present on the overall largely held. In general, Cape Fear was...was pretty tight between those who were coming back and those who wanted to return. There were...some grade levels of school had a significant number that weren't, and then sometimes you'd see a little bit closer, but overall, that's pretty consistent, I think, with what we saw.
So my question is this. So based on the virtials that we have that were showing that the intent to come back, Mr. LaFon, have we started looking at buses and started...Mr. Smith's not in here, is he? I don't see him. Have we started looking at going ahead and plugging those in to routes so that we'll know? I'm assuming we...we have been working on that already.
Yes, ma'am, your assumption's correct. There are...they're...they're working on that. I mean, they're doing the high school cohort collapsing this week, and they're waiting for your decision on what to do with the other, but...but yes, they're working on it. Once they have the information, it'll take them about a week, but they have to have the information first.
Ms. Fontana, just pull up one thing I would want to say, is that the parents who answered that largely were answering according to the principals based on what was voted on the 13th Plan B.
Mm-hmm.
So just...just something to be aware of, that most of the recipients of that survey were answering, as far as I know, with some...having talked to the principals, we talked to the parents, they were answering based on B, not necessarily four days.
Correct, correct.
So just want to make sure of that in terms of thinking about things like transportation that may or may not affect the final number for November 2nd.
And also, sorry, Dr. Higgins, but you know, I have another one, sorry. You might as well just...sorry, you might as well just stare there. So, you know, since our last meeting, I thought there was some really good discussion about teachers who are doing virtually and face-to-face, and I know that you were really into making sure we're having those conversations with everyone, and principals seem to be having those conversations. So how do you feel based on what our last meeting was like?
So we actually continued that conversation this morning with elementary principals continuing to kind of try to figure that out. Until we know the hard numbers, there's still concern. We did discuss the possibility of trying to put teachers together from across schools so that if we have situations where you kind of have a remainder, like you do in division, you've got three kids left, trying to pull them together to create a potential virtual teacher who might take from across. We've even looked at today, you know, we sort of thought about the fact that normally you think of combination teachers being two consecutive grade levels. However, if we look at virtual teaching, we could look at the possibility the teacher might teach the first and third. Not something we normally look at, but we sort of brainstormed that this morning as we talked it. Again, if we continue trying really hard to try to make sure the teachers do not have to teach multiple platforms at the same time, that may be something that we look at, even though we...I don't know of anybody who's ever done it before. But virtually, that might be possible. We've talked to districts where they're doing combos. I think they're still doing consecutive, but the way they divide the day, the teacher teaches one grade level in the morning, say, and then another grade level in the afternoon, if we were to take that approach, I mean, we might be able to do something like K and two, or second and four. It may depend on the teacher in question, but that is still where we'd like to go until we see the hard numbers. I still can't say exactly how many sections, but that's...that's on the table. Certainly, virtual within a school is on the table. The goal is to minimize any of the number of the teachers that have to teach...to teach both. We have even looked at if we have teachers who have to teach both, also dividing their day a little bit differently. And we've talked about being a little more strategic about when, I think, both our teachers and our parents, because we wanted the school experience to be as similar to inside and out as possible, we had communicated things like, you know, we want you to sign in for large parts of the day. I don't know if that's really what we meant. We meant we just wanted to try to duplicate the experience. So this morning, one of the things we talked about was being a little more specific and a little more strategic about when it would be that a virtual student would need to join in. Our original documentation had said, and we really wanted a kind of a four-hour day, kind of like the instructional day at school, realized that's too much for teachers and too much for students, so trying to be a little more specific about exactly when, and you know, for this mini lesson or for this small group lesson. So trying to be a little bit better about our communication externally and then even with the teachers. So we talked about that as well this morning. I think everything's on the table. I do think the staff is concerned about if we end up in situations where, based on numbers and based on numbers of teachers, we have someone who's doing both. That is not what we want. I don't think the staff is concerned. Now, we also have some teachers that said, "Look, I don't want you to...if this means we have to change teachers and change class rosters, I'll keep my babies and I'll keep doing virtual," or keep doing a combinations. They don't want to let go of their kids, which...
They're attached.
It is totally...I mean, I love that, too. And we talked to one particular principal who mentioned she's had several teachers who said, "You know what? If it means I might have to change my class roster, I'll just...I'll make it work and seek help." Because we know that if there's this changeover, there's a high likelihood that at least some students will have to change teachers based on class size limits. But, you know, we'll work with...if that's the teacher who says, "You know what? I don't want to give it up. I know my babies, I don't want to let go of them," then we'll...we'll kind of work with those teachers one-on-one if that's really what's best for the kids and for the teacher.
Right.
The idea of teachers teaching across schools will be different. I don't think we've ever done that in Pender in this kind of way, but...
There's a lot we haven't done until now.
Exactly what I was gonna say. I've never known a combination that wasn't consecutive grade levels.
Right.
Hey, you know?
Me either, that's interesting.
Well, and just to clarify, we were looking at, what, 28, 29% of the teachers were doing the combination face-to-face and virtual. We're not looking at a majority of the teachers doing this.
Across the...across the school system, no, ma'am. I mean, it's concentrated in a couple of schools based on their particular numbers and the number of teachers and all that. So it's not a lot, but it is hard. And we've talked to other systems that are doing it, and they...we hear the same thing. I talked to one last night, a principal in another school system who's, you know, they're trying to do flip classrooms and trying to teach that methodology overnight, and that's not something you can teach overnight. That's a whole...it's a whole different way of teaching. So a lot of school systems are basically just saying, you know, the...the teachers are gonna take both of them, you know, those few places that have assigned them completely to somebody else, which is just something I just...I really wasn't comfortable doing to K-5 kids. But in talking to some of the others, that's where they got the idea of teaching combos online, and then today, the twist was maybe not consecutive. Again, I think it'll be different for our folks if we have a teacher in one part of our school system who might be responsible for...from others. That's just not...especially elementary where they're...understandably, they're very possessive of their students. That's what you want as an elementary teacher. It's unusual not to be teaching in your own school, but I think one of the things we've talked about this morning was that that would be something we need to do if we're gonna try to keep some kind of leveling, because even some of the schools that they're doing both to this point because of the cohort process, a lot of the principals managed to make it where at least on a...on a certain cohort day, you only had one or the other. When we talk about the possibility of multiple days, that wouldn't be possible, because now the students...the same students be coming to school every single day. So when we weigh that, that's where we started thinking about some...some solutions that we've never really thought of before. Yes, ma'am?
So in our region, it's Carteret, Onslow, Brunswick, those are the...are those the three in our region, the school systems, who have gone to A?
To A? Be honest, I don't know off the top of my head.
I think so. I don't think there's any more. I don't think there's any more. And when you say you've had conversations, you've been talking to school systems?
Yeah, we actually had a regional meeting Monday, and this was one of the things we talked about, and then I specifically have talked to people in Onslow, Brunswick, and New Hanover, and Duplin.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else?
Dr. Hill, has anything changed with the cabinet's opinion from last week's vote?
Sir, I don't think so. I think basically what we're looking at is, is an ease into this instead of a hard walk into it, but we would do what the board directs us to do.
If the board votes to overturn their vote from last week, how quick do you think that the school system will be able to implement this and the kids, and A actually gets put into place?
We would still kind of stick to our guns of asking, requesting that we have a two-week period, in this case, it would push it one more week to the ninth, which would only mean three days, because if you look at the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of the next week, Monday's a school day, Tuesday's a work day, it's an election day, Wednesday's a virtual day, so you're only talking about Monday, Thursday, and Friday. So, we'd ask, you know, if the board would allow us to start it on the ninth, if they were to go to a full A. Which, again, if that makes sense, that it's really only three days for kids, or students, delay.
So, we would get out another, we would send out another intent?
Yes, ma'am.
If we were to go to A, and this time?
It would include the days, whether you're gonna drive, or you're gonna bus, are you leaving, are you coming, and then we would try to schedule from that, and then present a schedule that would indicate to parents whether you switch teachers, what your schedule would look like, what your travel schedule would look like, so that would allow them a more, another opportunity to say yes or no, I'm good with this, let's go with it, and then our principals could put those schedules together, I mean, a whole lot tighter. It would also allow, knowing that same week I just discussed, those are full days, teachers can really focus on shifting over and getting ready. We've got to change out, we've ordered, and we've had ordered, just to have them ready, especially with our EC population, flexi, get, flexi shield glass dividers, it's hard to get enough for everybody, we've been cleaning desks like crazy out of storage, we're gonna have to adjust those down to try to make desks that would go into an elementary setting, so that we can get away from as many tables as possible, between that and the gross of flexi glass dividers that we've ordered, we're hoping we can make a good effort, if, you know, when, if we go in that direction, and we've also started cleaning every desk we can find, as far as the old sliding high school desk, that we think that would fit the fourth and fifth grades, because the object here is, we're not gonna be able to avoid the six-foot social distancing gap, they're gonna have to get closer together in the classroom, if we move to an A. We're preparing, basically.
Is there any indication about middle schools? Because I know we're doing something about high school, we've been talking about, and I know the governor's not, but...
No, sir, there's been no indications at, at our middle school or high school as far as the change. But, again, just, just to make the board aware, we very rarely get any of, any previous information, I mean, literally, the, the closest thing I've come is probably less than an hour before it was announced, to anybody giving us a heads-up, so, again, I remind you, when this all started, we learned about it on Friday, like everybody else, we started school differently on Monday, then we finished it on Friday, so, we've been working through this as we go.
You said the ninth is, if we were to vote, that's when you would want to start?
If you were to leave B and go to A, yes, sir, we would request it.
Well, and I'll just say that makes sense, because you'd be bringing everybody back together, and you go Monday, and then you'd be off that Tuesday of that week anyhow, it would just make more sense if we were to choose to do that, board members, that we really do consider that, I hadn't thought about that, that Tuesday. It's a good point.
Well, it gives us time to make a lot of movement.
Right. Mr. LaFon, that would be good for buses? The ninth would work, correct? Maybe?
I would like to, you know, I think so, I'd have to talk with Mr. Smith first, to make sure that, that he's good with that, that is the timeframe that they're working on, so, they should have the high school cohort collapsing that, by the end of this week, and they, that would give them some time to work on it, give them an extra week to work on it, so, yes, ma'am, I think they can, I think they can be ready.
But the high school cohorts, we're staying with the second, correct? We're staying with that?
That's our question, yes, ma'am. We still feel like we can meet that day.
Feel like that'll be okay? Yeah, there's a lot of high school students and parents out there, I don't know about the rest of y'all, but I've heard a lot, that they're just so excited to do that, so they're ready to move with that.
Are we, do we have the ability to do the social distancing that is being required by the governor? Because it seems like, from the last meeting, I think every board member wants the kids to go back, just like the parents and everyone else does, but the reason why I voted the way I did last time was because of logistics was the issue, and are we gonna create a bigger problem, I mean, are we gonna be able to get them in there, do we have the space? I mean, I don't, I don't know, I mean, because it's kind of like we're having to vote on something without not knowing...
Yes, sir, the, the DuVane and, and Mr. LaFon can correct me on this, and, and anybody else that's working on our team, Mr. Taylor and Ms. Collins, who are doing, matter of fact, they just had an update this morning with the State Department, DPI, but basically, the two main points that have allowed this to be an option is that they've decreased the restrictions on buses for elementary children, and they've decreased the restrictions for inside the classroom only in the schools, so in the hallways, in the lunchrooms, intake, so when they get off the bus, I mean, this is what we're talking about, we gotta make plans for, because how does lunch work when you, when you add, you know, a considerable influx of children? How does the hallway work now? The lines are gonna be much longer, you know, will it work, or you have to break them up, who sees them, who, do we need more personnel? I think the most in-your-face issue is when they come to school. Now, you're getting twice as many kids off, potentially checking every temperature is still required, how's that process work? We don't have more hands, so we've got to figure out that, and I think one of the bigger ones that our medical staff would, would talk about is, now that we talk about a, kind of an isolation room, when there is a situation where a student needs to be looked at by a parent or a doctor, or get, you know, maybe something that's a bit right, they have to have their own room, certain schools are gonna have a lot of difficulty with that, so these are things we gotta work through, and figure out what, you know, so basically, the only, the only flexibility we were giving, given by the governor, was inside the classroom, you can now put kids together, closer than six feet, and on the bus, only in the elementary seats, only with elementary students, and we have combo buses, so that's something that's gotta be worked out as well, so...
Now, is there no max size for fourth and fifth graders, I understand? Like, you can put 30 kids in a fourth and fifth grade class?
Yes, sir, the restrictions, the, the previous restrictions by law are K-3, which is the, you know, the classroom size restrictions that have been going on for two or three years now, more.
And so, we don't know how many classes we have that'll have 30 or more?
Not until we receive the intent forms with all that information.
And again, if we were to move to A, we're giving people the option, it's a choice, you know, if people, if parents don't want to send their children back, they do not have to, just like when we did, we moved into B, it was a complete option for everyone, and I hope everyone out there is hearing that, it would be a complete option if you choose to send your kids or not, that's if we were to move to Plan A, so...
And so, with all the problems that have gone on with the online learning, people that are online only?
That won't be an issue with elementary, sir, we do our own online services.
I know, but, well, there's other issues about that, too, that I've heard, but is this a theoretically make that group a little bit smaller? Do you see any improvement that would happen for people that...
So, if we go somewhat based on this, you know, we would reduce it by a third, I guess?
Yeah.
So, that's the best data that I could give you, is that we would expect it, I guess, to go down by a third.
All right, good enough. Any more questions? Anybody? All right, anybody want to change this, or what do you want to do here?
I, I have no problem making the motion, I just want to make sure we're clear on the date, I mean, so, when I make it, do I have to include the date in the motion? I do?
Does it not, they can postpone the date? That's two weeks, gonna be a...
I don't know. I mean...
I mean, that's my hesitation, I mean, I agree with, because I know at the last meeting, there was a lot of side comments about, you know, wanting to get kids in and feel like that we have failed the parents, but, I mean, I'm just, I still stick with the same stance, regardless of that, I mean, I have to go with what is being said to me. I want those kids in there, I want my middle school child in there, I mean, I have a daughter that's affected by this, you know, you have kids that are being affected by it.
Well, as, having elementary experience, I will say, that if you start it on the second, and you have everybody there, and you have a day off, that is hard when you have kindergartners and first graders, that is very, very difficult, to then, you, the next week, you get them back on a regular schedule, because that next week, we have the 11th is not a school day, right? But that's on a Wednesday, correct? So, students wouldn't be in school? That's right. So, I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that the week of the second.
So, Dr. Hill, you're, you're saying that you're comfortable with November 9th? If we did approve this, November 9th would be the start date that you guys would be...
I would never use the word comfortable in this situation, but yes, ma'am.
Well, it's comfortable, well, I'm sorry.
I understand, yes, yes, that would, that would absolutely improve the odds of making this work, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we move into Plan A. With this in mind, and with this motion, I ask that we do the following, I ask that we continue to keep our Wednesdays as they are now, I also ask Dr. Hill, his staff, principals, teachers, to, I encourage them to use creative strategies in order to eliminate our teachers having to do both face-to-face and virtual at the same time. I also ask that we put Plan A into effect on November the 9th, which will hopefully give us enough time to at least hammer out some of these issues.
All right, Ms. Fontana has made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Burns has made a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, three to one, motion carries. All right. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add? Do we have a closed sess, Brandon, do you have anything for close that we need?
No, sir, I do not, unless the board needs me for some reason.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question, with all of these special call meetings we've been having lately, is it, would it make more sense legally? Because I know we had to give for open meeting law, do you foresee we need to be called in recess, so we don't have to keep postponing any decisions or anything that comes up? Or how does the board want to handle that, or not, not deal with that issue?
We would have to set a date if we recessed, or a time, correct, Brandon?
Yes, sir, that is correct, Mr. Chairman, you'd have to, you'd have to recess to a time and date certain.
I don't have a reason to recess, I just was wondering, I was asked.
We just, so if we recessed, what if we did not see a need to continue the meeting later?
You, you...
We'd still have to meet officially to adjourn.
You, you still have to meet to come together to adjourn, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
I'm not asking for recess, I just...
Okay, all right. In that case, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Mr. George has made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Burns has seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?